Only the one where the commissioners are.
There was an online thing.
Yeah, that's what.
Yeah, I signed up for.
Fresh tape.
Good evening. Welcome to Wednesday, January twenty seconds Commissioner meeting. If you will stand and join me in pledge in a short prayer. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic, which has stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Heavenly Father, we ask that you bless our nation. We ask for your guidance while conducting county business. We ask that you grant us wisdom that the decisions we make not only be beneficial to our community, but are pleasing to you. All these things we ask in your precious name. Amen. The commissioners had an opportunity to review the minutes previous meeting, and if so, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Second. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the claims? And if so, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Have the commissioners had an opportunity to review the payroll? And if so, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Motion is made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. We have a treasurer's report. Joel, can I just go ahead and do all these reports at once?
Listen to it.
Okay. Cause one of them I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it before I approve it. I'll do the first, I'll do three of them. We have the treasurer's monthly report, weights and majors monthly report, and the innovative technical solutions report. Do I have a motion on those three?
Motion to accept as presented.
I second.
I have motion in second on those. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. On the other one is a, and I just wanted to read this, a, it's from the Sava Club. It's their economic impact. I just wanted to give the figure so those of us who always wonder what all goes on out there. The total impact at the Sava Club for this last year was four million, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars to our local economy. So do I have a motion to approve that report?
So moved.
I second.
Motion's made in second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero. We don't have anybody from EDC Chamber or Josh. Don't see Angela. Brian. Brayden. You sure? I want to thank you for the job that you and your crew have been doing, even despite those that are maybe not as pleased, but you guys have done a heck of a job in considering the conditions and everything else. Thank you very much. Yes. Those of us that are in pretty much constant communication with them and the progress, you're to be commended. Thank you. I would expect a residual check for that. I don't see anybody from planning sheriff's department. Debbie. I don't see anybody from clerks, park. Assessor, holders. Well, we're gonna get right down to this pretty quick. Uh. I'm getting to it, cause I know he's got something to say, so. Surveyor's office. Not a problem.
Um, I got a resolution establishing the distance from a drainage pipe discharge to a property line. Uh, this is sort of goes back to the new stormwater ordinance. We didn't have a specification how far it was to our best ability to establish that, what we thought was best practice, but we decided to put the, a number down on that to establish something. So actually, it's the distance from any, any drainage pipe discharge cannot be any closer than twenty-five feet from a property line, and that requires, requirement will be added to the chapter four, section L of the Hendrick County Stormwater Technical Standards. So if anybody's got questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Now, I want to specify, since I've been part of this, and I know there's been some back and forth between other department, uh, but if there is a problem with not making the twenty-five feet, if it does not encumber on another property owner, there is a variance procedure that we can go through to allow that correct.
Yes. And if we look at the whole property to see if there's someplace else we can exit it to establish the same thing, may have to run it longer, but if there's no way they can get it, then yes, some of the properties are very small. So if they do have to daylight it, it, not much we can do. We have to, they'll have to ask for a variance to get approved from the drainage board.
Okay. Any discussion from my colleagues? No.
No.
If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the resolution. Do I need to read it, Joel?
Steve, summarize what you did.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just here to get approval to approve, to apply for a grant. It's through the state and it's for nine-one-one critical GIS data sets. Um, so it's to the Indiana Geographic Information Council. I'm asking for twenty-one-five, twenty-one thousand, five hundred, and I'm going with a consulting firm, um, to do the work for us. So I gave you guys all the paperwork. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. Really good. Okay.
It looks like a good probability of getting it at some point.
It is. So the state, um, it's only for counties, and they're giving, um, awarding up to eight counties a month until January twenty-twenty-five. So I'm trying to get this through now so I can get in line for the February grant. And if we don't get it, they just keep us in the pool. So hopefully eventually we'll get it. So.
I'll say, do I have a motion for the grant? And do you have to do anything?
Okay. Okay. Okay, and. Okay. So if we get the grant, like I said, I had a firm give me a proposal on cost to do it, so they don't have to go through and get that firm approved to do the work after I get order the grant, correct? Okay.
And you don't need any money from us.
I don't need anything. Hopefully I bring some money in.
There you go. I like those the best.
Steve, do you want a motion to?
Yes, I have a motion.
Motion to approve the grant request.
Second. Second. Motion's made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. You're welcome. Angela, since you came in later, do you have anything? Or, thank you. Okay, I have. A quote from. We can do the Resolve Tech and Pining Quote Service Agreement for the Justice Center. We want to get that one out of the way first, since we have tabled it. Do we have any further discussion on this from my colleagues?
Um, did either of you have a chance to go through the comparison of contracts?
Yes, and everything that you asked, I'd already approached and I even reached out and asked some clarification on some of it. Uh, some of it's just verbiage. The agreement as far as the contract saying with Pining, we would be priority. We have that with Resolve Tech also, uh, cause they're more local.
Okay.
So that kind of balances out some of the other things.
What about the emergency service rate?
Emergency service rate. It's. The way he described it, their result tech is a union paid, so theirs is whatever the market value is. So it gets comparable right now, but result tech like might be a shade higher. And so I'm gonna leave it up to all of you two to decide which you would prefer.
What about the preferred customer status where you get priority service time?
Both of them will do it.
Same.
Yeah, it's the same.
And what about Pining's restriction that they have to do all repairs on the units? Would that apply to Resolve Tech too?
Uh, I actually didn't ask Resolve Tech specifically. Uh, obviously, if they can't get to it, then we'll be allowed to call somebody out. Uh. They've been pretty good. Like I said, it's, uh, it's pretty close as far as monetarily, the service is going to be fairly equal. I think we'll, uh. From what Resolve Tech was saying, they will probably be here quicker, cause they have people who live here close by. So it's. It's fairly even at this point. Uh, I just, I was concerned about the hourly rate. I think Resolve takes a little higher than, uh, Pining is, so it's.
So I preferred the con, the Pining contract, but I don't have any experience working with either company. So.
Steve, is there a mount for Resolve Tech for an hourly?
I know it's, it was whatever, whatever the fair market value as far as their, whatever their union contract says, and I don't know what that rate is.
So it can change. It can vary at any point in time.
Yes. Cause they get raises. I think they get yearly raises, so I don't know three years from now what that raise. And obviously, we're only doing it for one year, so it will only affect us for that year. So. That's why I said it's, it's up to you guys. I wasn't overjoyed about that part, but.
So the Pining contract is five thousand dollars less a year? And. Do you, do you prefer working with Resolve Tech?
I, I have no, I have no one way or the other. It doesn't matter. We've worked with Pining and Resolve Tech. I've, uh.
So that Pining comes from Indianapolis?
Yeah.
And does it make any difference the payment schedule? Um, Pining's was monthly, Resolve Tech is quarterly, and I assume it doesn't matter to you guys.
Yeah. Yeah. Pining's, we, actually, Pining used to be Siemens, which used to be something else. They're the ones that actually have been here since all of this was put in. They put it all in. So they've been here since the day the Justice Center started.
So we've had a long relationship as far as that part. That's why I said it's entirely what pleasure of this board, cause I have no. I'm not pushing one way or the other. How's that?
That's fine.
And they're contractual.
You coordinate most of this work though, so I think that your preference is.
Well, and I usually, it's, it's, whether it's an emergency and something that we need right away, we have had Resolve Tech come in. Uh, sometimes they're here a little quicker than Pining, but we've also, Pining shows up and does the job, uh, when we've needed them here. So it's kind of a, it depends on what day and what the problem is.
And Pining does require that we let them do the work, so would that bother you?
No, it doesn't bother me. If that's who we choose, then it's who we choose. Uh, like I said, it's, it's entirely up to you.
So what do you think?
Just to make sure I'm reading this correctly, it's, it's like five thousand, four hundred dollars a year difference. Five thousand, four hundred over the, right?
Yep.
And Pining is the least amount of money compared to the Pining and Resolve Tech.
And did you go through and compare the covered items and you feel like they're equivalent, even though they weren't stated the same?
Yep.
Okay.
So they, they've both been, I mean, I've had excellent, uh, results from Resolve Tech. I've had the same with Pining. Uh, it just depends on what the problem is at the time.
Who do we have a service agreement with now?
I think it's with Pining right now. As far as the Justice Center there, it's just been ongoing. They were a little bitter last time, and that's how they got it.
Okay. So. Joe, I would make a, I'm not making a motion yet. I'm just saying out loud that I would do that unless you, I would make a motion to do the Pining contract unless you disagree with that. I'd like to know.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, then it is a motion. I'm making a motion to do, use Pining for our HVAC service at the Justice Center.
I have a motion in the second. Do all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And now, the. I really don't need to. The skin of the window. I think that's just informational.
Yeah, if I can see that, that you don't mind at all.
I was gonna say, cause they're just putting another window on the other side.
Yeah, the email that, um, because, so when we did the test windows, uh, back in August or July, we did, from Pella, one down here, one in the Masonic building, because Duncan is using, not using Pella as a sub, they're using, um, and the name escapes me, the window company that they're using. Oh, my gosh. But anyway, it's a different window company, so they want to do, come out and, Anderson, yes, thank you. They want to come out and do, um, spec out the one across the hallway, and then one there on the twenty-eighth.
Yes.
And they just wanted to make sure that they can get into the offices over there. They won't need, they'll be fine down here, and they're gonna spec it out, and then they're gonna do another replacement of the windows to make sure that they don't run into anything as well. But on the twenty-eighth is when they want to, um, come in and do, kind of do the same thing that, that Pella did, but they need to get specs on the windows.
Okay.
Steve.
Yeah.
Steve, there is a price, there is a price. You skipped the quotes at the top. There is one for the windows where they gave you.
Like six thousand or something.
Yeah, the, um, for the stained window and not painted. You skipped that section.
I did.
I wasn't gonna call you out just yet, but.
But you did anyway.
I did anyway.
I can't find it now that I'm going through.
That's all it's working for me.
It's just a little email note at the top. Yeah. Yeah, to, to change the windows to be stained instead of painted is six thousand, three hundred and six.
That was if we wanted to do a change order, correct Debbie? I was gonna say, because.
You wanted them stained and stained.
I was gonna say, cause we can actually decide that later. It wasn't something we need to make a decision on now, but yeah, I wanted, cause I remember asking for that quote, cause I wanted them stained, what the increase was going to be as opposed to painting them. Uh, cause we're gonna have to pay to have somebody come out and paint them anyway. I wonder what the difference would be between painting and staining. Uh, for information at this point, something we can discuss later, if that's what everybody's appetite is. I just thought they looked nice. Cause I believe, and Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong, these were going to be stained. The windows in this room, weren't they going to be stained? The replacement windows, we had decided to stain the ones on this floor and the rest of them.
I believe, I believe so, but I'll have to go back and look through the documentation.
That was what we decided at.
We had talked about it, yes, that they would be stained in here, but I can't remember the final decision. Um, but I've got the documents. I'll go back there and look.
Thank you. But we can hold on to that one for now. Yeah. No, not at this point. And. We have a quote from Pining on the Justice Center for a repair. I believe that's for eleven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Yep.
Do I have a motion on that?
I, I just have a question first. So what line item in our budget did the Justice Center repairs come from?
Repair maintenance buildings, yeah.
Do you remember what, what that line item was budgeting? Do you have any idea what we budgeted off the top of your head? Three hundred thousand?
Yeah, it's over a quarter million.
Motion to approve this repair quote.
Second the motion.
Motion's made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Next, we have a work order. Or we have a pit in the elevator shaft that needs, we have an inspection that they can't complete until the water is pumped out of the pit. The problem is there is some oil mixed in with that water, which makes it different material, and we have to have it specially pumped out and hauled off. So far, they have not given us a approximate timeframe of how long it will take, but the mechanic's rate is three hundred and thirty-five point seven one dollars per hour. But the mechanic's rate is three hundred and thirty-five point seven one dollars per hour. The team rate is five hundred and thirteen point nine cents per hour, so I hope it takes less than an hour, because it's about two hundred gallon, I think, of water and oil mixture in that pit. I don't know how quickly they will pump it, I hope it, like I said, for this price, I hope it's very quickly. Uh, so far, I haven't given it, no one has given me a definitive timeframe. So, I just know we have to get the water out of that pit before we can get the rest of the inspection on the elevators done.
I asked Joel if he could read this, because I thought it was interesting. Do you care if he, did you have a chance to look at it?
Yeah, I did have a chance to look at it, and actually, I looked at it originally in November, I think it was sent to me, and I think we didn't take action on it at the time, but I, I've got a little bit of concern because it, it's about as broad of an indemnification provision as I've ever seen in a contract, I mean, it, it essentially says we're agreeing to indemnify TK Elevator for anything that happens in connection with this, even if they decide they aren't going to observe safety standards and for their negligent acts and for about anything under the sun. Now, I, I don't know, one, if this is such a unique project and so dangerous that the only conditions you'll ever get anybody to do in will be under these conditions, or necessarily what it entails and how much of a risk that is. But I think probably before we accept it, we'd probably like to go back to them at least once and say, hey, can you change this provision? Um, now certainly if this is something that's time sensitive, you could approve it subject to that, and then we could reconsider it at a subject, at a subsequent meeting if they don't agree to that. If it's something you think needs to get done before the next meeting.
Well, I mean, it, we put it off roughly a month, and I was still arguing with the fact of the hourly rate I thought was outrageous, but if you wouldn't mind list of the provisions and things that you would like to see.
Sure.
From there, and then you or I get ahold of them and find out what we can do to have those changed to.
Yep.
Approve.
Absolutely.
And I don't have a problem entertaining a motion to table this for now.
Do you think this is our only op- option?
So far, they're the only people who responded to pump the pit. Because we even thought there's a outfit that does, a lot of your automotive places called Safety Clean, and that will take used oils and stuff and haul them off. And apparently, they don't want to do this, is what I'm being told. So I don't know if that has a deciding factor on that or not, but that's what I was being advised on, that nobody else wanted to do it. So. But I, I agree, I wasn't happy with this, but since nobody else will do it, I wasn't sure if we were between a rock and a hard place, but if it's that broad of, of agreement that you're not as comfortable with it, I fully understand and I agree with that part. So if, if we want to hold off or approve it, subject to you, whatever provisions you want to have revised on it, I'm okay with that too.
And I, I'm curious why it's so broad, if it is really dangerous work, or if they just don't want to commit that it's going to be done right because it's complicated, or they, or if someone really is likely to get injured.
Thinking of garden hose out on the street and we just walk away, but. That might not go over very well, but. So, uh. I'd entertain a motion either way, whatever your pleasure is.
And make a motion to go back and see if they can tighten up the indemnification and maybe find out if it is very dangerous, ask some questions, and then in two weeks, make a decision.
Second.
Motion is made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three zero. And next up, we have a request from WR Duncan. They're the ones who are going to start the renovations on the courthouse. They are requesting to block off a few spark parking spots on Broad Street for two days, so they can remove one or two corbels to use as a pattern to begin the shop drawings and fabrication. They would like to do this on one thirty and one thirty-one, works itself should take only half a day, but they would have to have a lift delivered in the morning on one thirty and picked up on the day after. And they would like to have the sidewalk barricaded for half a day while they're using a lift, so people aren't walking underneath the boom. Do I have any discussion?
I don't see an issue with it.
I don't need to. Joe?
I have no issue with it.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Next up, I have a grant application. Mendon Hall and Associates.
Hello, good evening, I'm Tina Henderson, I'm with Mendon Hall and Associates. I have been a grant administrator for twenty-seven years, working all over the state of Indiana, and I also have um, work experience here in Henry County as well, um, with various different towns and as well as the county. Uh, tonight, I'm here with the Henry County Expo, Brianna Chapman, and then also Duke Ham, uh, the president and the secretary and the treasurer of the organization. And I'm going to try to make an hour-long meeting that Steve attended, uh, here in ten minutes, uh, for you guys, to, to make a long story short.
The shoot for six.
Okay, shoot for six, I'm going to try. Um, so our goal here tonight is to ask the county commissioners for approval to apply for a CDBG grant uh, for the Henry County Expo building, and I like to focus straightly on, uh, and what is only eligible, which is the community center and the banquet hall, uh, and the, also the Purdue University Extension Office. So this is what the grant is going to be sought for, is to finish that building, so we have the existing structure up, where the county funds have placed that structure, and it just, the interior needs to be finished. In December, uh, the Expo Group and I met with the Indiana Office of Rural Affairs to see if this would be an eligible item to qualify for their seven hundred thousand dollar grant, they said yes, if we can meet the national objective of an income survey. With that being said, um, utilizing the FPBH, on the second page, we have a building, uh, that needs to be finished in six, that equals six hundred and eighty-two thousand, six ninety-five. Uh, you have the Engineering, Construction Administration, Construction Observation, Grant Administration, Labor Standards, Environmental Review, for a total cost of eight hundred and thirteen thousand, four ninety-two fifty, a total local match of one sixty-two, six ninety-eight fifty, and we're going to ask a CDBG grant for six hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, we want to make it clear that the Henry County Expo will provide this one sixty-two, six ninety-eight, they need to raise those funds uh, to meet the application deadline that's presented in your timeline of June twentieth. And we are planning to come back in front of the commissioners to let you know and show, provide you with the local match that is in place before we make that application. Um, we're asking for the Henry County Commissioners to serve as the lead applicant, because you have to be a city, town, or county to apply. Um, they are not able to apply directly without the county serving as the lead applicant. Uh, you're the lead applicant because the county owns the property and the building. Um. If we look at what the timeline is, I did have communication last fall when working on another project with Carrie from ARA, because you can only have, a county can have three CDBG grants, which you already know, right? And, uh, the first application is your O-O-O-R, and it looks like Carrie's slated to make the round one. Now, I have not confirmed that recently, if she's still on schedule to meet round one, but if she is, the award announcements will take place in March. And that clears the way for us to move forward with the round two CDBG application for the Henry County Expo building. If by chance, she's not funded that first time in, because sometimes that happens, you have to reapply. Um, it will push the Henry County Expo into round two um, for CDBG, because you can only have one application at a time, or the commissioners will need to make a decision on their priority project that's being submitted at that point in time. But I would ask that, um, we secure round one and round two, uh, in order to, you know, just in case, also, sometimes it takes us a couple of times to get funded, but if we're not funded the first time in, we have that second round to go back in. Um, an income survey is required, so you have to meet a national objective, which is called low to moderate income persons. Currently, your county is right at forty-eight percent, uh, forty-seven point five percent LMI, and you have to be at fifty-one percent. So that's going to be an income survey that, that needs to be done, it talks about it here, it's going to be, um, the, uh, Henry County Expo is working with a creative way to come up with completing that income survey. As a grant administrator, I will help collect those responses, or I might be in charge of doing that, but we're, we're working on cutting that cost down, we're not asking for the county uh, to pay for that income survey, um, the Expo Center will. And we roughly need around almost eight hundred responses back for that income survey, and, and that's why it's countywide. And I just want to, you know, let you know that that income survey is a part of this, we'll need aim, names and addresses of county residents, and those residents are, those eight hundred residents will be randomly selected. The rest of the timeline kind of pushes forward, you'll see where they're, um, I like to say, if you're going to qualify it for a grant, you need three things, you need financials, need your engineering, uh, environmental review, permits, and site control, so we're looking at five, but we have, uh, we're working on those finances that raise those funds. Uh, the six, one sixty-two, six ninety-eight, we have the engineering done by FPBH, and we have the environmental review that can be done by the grant deadline, it's in this timeline. Permits only have to be identified, and the county currently owns the building, so we're really narrowing down on everything. The fundraising efforts, we talked in great detail at the last meeting, and the Henry County Expo Board is really confident in their ability to raise those funds. They have been working with Don Don, a fundraiser, uh, to help solidify the existing donations and what's left and those pledges. And so that, um, has been finalized, and they are, they're looking forward to starting as soon as possible to raise the one sixty-two, six ninety-eight fifty to serve as that local match. So, um, again, my request is to seek Henry County to be the lead applicant for the CDBG grant for the Henry County Expo Center, Community Center.
Debbie? Since you're going to have to help or basically oversee this, your input, please.
It's a lot of work on this. I mean, because everything comes through us, and I, and the questions I ask her, who signs it, who's actually in charge? We take care, we take all the money in, we're responsible for everything, so when it comes time signing contracts, making decisions, whose decision is that? And, you know, I asked her to make sure that, and she said they were, they have to, it's a federal grant, all the guidelines have to be done by a federal grant, so they need to be responsible for that, which she said they would be. Um, I have a lot of questions about it, but it's an eyesore, if we can get it done this way, I mean, it's got to be finished one way or another.
I had, um, sent out a calendar and invitation for an executive session to discuss the open um, expo contract that the county has with the Expo Building for next Wednesday. Because that, we had, we were in the process of considering contract negotiation. And I'm making a motion that we table this until we have an executive session to discuss that contract and vote on this at our next meeting.
If I might, just so Tina knows. Because you were, you were asking about the O-O-R, um, Henry County was awarded the O-O-R, uh, owner occupied, December nineteenth.
Oh, great, so they're out, so you have three opens.
I don't know the particulars on that, but, but we were awarded December the nineteenth, the Okra um, owner occupied, five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that mess with your timeline?
You know, as long as we know as soon as possible, um, Brianna, does this mess with your fundraising efforts?
Um, I mean, essentially, we're just asking if you would be willing to be the lead applicant. Um, I don't want to table it for too long, because it's a pretty tight, tight timeline to get it through, and everything's submitted by June first. We have to have the money in place by May first, so, um, we really want to push forward. Um, more than happy to discuss the lease whenever, you know, we can work simultaneously along with that on the lease. I'm not sure the lease is going to affect, uh, what we're trying to do with the grant. You'll, uh, the, you know, the county will still own the property. Our, um, in the lease, it states that once the building is completed, it'll be a county-owned building, and that's not something we, um, requested any changes on. Um, so the requested lease changes, I don't think will affect how this grant will move forward.
I think from my perspective, as we look at the negotiation of the expo contract, there are questions that I have as a new seated commissioner, that I would like to discuss with the other commissioners about the expo contract, which is, and I think it's, I think it's worth a two-week delay to have that conversation, to make sure we're all on the same page, so. Hence the motion.
Tina, where do you guys stand? Do you know where the library, because Middletown, Middletown Library is wanting to apply for the grant as well, which we would have to be the lead on that one as well, and you would have to make the determination, so are they, do you know if they're still moving forward, or what are they doing?
Debbie, that's a great question, I was able to talk to Teresa today, and unfortunately, they had canceled their meeting earlier in January to determine their local match, so the last time I had reached out to the commissioners, I let them know that we were trying to make our way in to request a CDBG for the county to serve as the, uh, lead applicant, the library would actually be a subrecipient. The Expo Center's not going to be a subrecipient, because they're not going to own the building. Um, so I just want to let, let you know the difference of what's a subrecipient and why the Expo Center, um, is not a subrecipient. Uh, it's the ownership of the building. Uh, with that being said, Teresa was unable to verify the local match at this time, and so I, I wanted to wait on the Middletown, I shared with her that we were coming in front of the commissioners tonight with the Expo Center. Um, you know, the county has already spent significant amount of funds on that structure, and we found a, a way to finish the interior. Um, and I, I'm, I'm happy to share that with you, that we find, we found some funds to help finish that building. And, um, they would be utilizing the slot. Now, I did share with Teresa that I'm going to try to go back to Okra, uh, because Okra requires a city, town, or county. The last time that we approached the Okra office, um, they stated that because Middletown uh, is in Henry County and receives funding from Henry, Henry County for the library, that it seemed Henry County should be the lead, the lead applicant, but I'm going to go back to answer your question to Okra tomorrow. I was going to wait and see what the decision was here tonight, and I wanted to go back to Okra and say, um, that Henry, you know, Henry County has the Expo Center, and we need to see, go back and revisit Middletown serving as their lead applicant for the library. And I was at least going to try that and see what Okra would say about utilizing, um, because you have to be a city, town, and Middletown could actually serve as their lead applicant. If Okra approves that.
So as commissioners, we, we own, we own the land that the Expo sits on, this project has been going on for a very long time. We have had continual problems fundraising, and I think it would be a very good idea for the commissioners to sit down and talk out loud about what would happen if we can't get the matching funds. What would happen if we are not rewarded the grant, what timeline we're willing to wait to see if these funds come in. And I think a two-week delay for the commissioners to sit down and talk about different scenarios, and what would happen at different stages if this doesn't go, and the best-case scenario would be a very wise thing for us to do.
Joel, can I ask you a question? If just approving them to go forward with the application project hinged on whether or not what we discussed with. or not what we discussed with the board on the lease, can we make that a contingent? Or would that be too much red tape to have to mess with?
Well, without knowing, I mean, I know last year we had some discussions about what the response is going to be to the requested lease modifications, without knowing with the current board what those current requests are going to end up being. I'd hate to tell you, yes, that would absolutely not have an impact on telling them to go forward tonight, without knowing exactly what our response is going to be to the requested lease modifications, just because I can't, I mean, you're kind of asking me to do the crystal ball, and I, I can't really do that and with a certainty, yeah, and say that that may not have an issue, so.
I will say too, like, if we don't, if we can't raise the funds to match, we have to have it in place by May first before she can apply. If we don't have it in place, ideally, we'll just move on to the next round and try to hit the next deadline as far as the fundraising is concerned. But you guys have to approve it, so, and once we have the funds in place, you have to basically check the account, make sure the money's there as the lead applicant, so, you know, we, we know that there's a possibility we may not get this. I mean, so there's, but this is the avenue we want to start on. We're going to have to fundraise no matter what, so we're going to start that. So there's, doesn't really put the county on any sort of hook if we don't raise the matching funds. I mean, unless you want to be, unless you want to help us, but it, it just moves us to the next round.
I did not include round two deadlines, because I just wanted to focus on what we can meet for round one, but I'd be more than happy to provide those to you. You know, at this point in time, I also just want to make the ask that with, with this, we're not seeking any funds at this time from the county commissioners. Now, when I was talking with Debbie, we talked about maybe a fundraising consultant, maybe if, what your, the commissioners thought about paying for a fundraising consultant to come in and help them with that one sixty-two, six ninety-eight fifty, and we could get a quote for the second fundraising option to help the arena out as well. So I wanted to just make a second ask. So we're asking first for that CDBG slot for round one and round two of 2025, and then we're also asking what the commissioners would like to do if, if you would be willing to help them out with a fundraising consultant as well. They're prepared to take the one sixty-two, six ninety-eight fifty on their own, and they're working with, like I said, a consultant named Don Dunn. And with that being said, we just, I thought we would also just make the ask as well on, on your thoughts and direction to go with that question.
What is the cost of the consultant?
I was going to say, that's what I needed to know, what are you talking monetarily for a consultant? Because I'm going to be honest with you, the, we rely heavily on what our constituents ask us, because we're the ones that place us on these positions. And the general consensus is, overall, whether we like the project or not, is they didn't want county tax money being used to fund this project at this point. So if that changes tomorrow, and it's overwhelmingly that the constituents say they want us to do that, then obviously, we would change our position, but right now, I'm not sure we're there. But I can't say anything if I don't know what that monetary ask is.
Okay. We can definitely look into receiving quotes from three different firms to, to provide that service, whether it's for the one, like I said, I know she's, has it on her schedule to start working on that one sixty-two, six ninety-eight fifty, and Expo Board is on board with that as well. But I just wanted to just see if there would be any, and we could reach out and get those quotes to provide it back. So I think that would be the best direction is for us to receive some quotes first, so that we could answer that financial question.
Steve, and I'll just be honest, I think it's going to be more of a council than commissioner, because nowhere in your budgets, do you guys have money to pay for consultants?
No.
No. I think that as much as it is unpopular to say out loud, the commissioners have a responsibility to decide how long we're going to continue to wait for the project to be completed per the contract. And so that's why my motion is that we have an executive session as a board of commissioners to discuss the contract negotiation, the status of the contract, since we've not yet heard back from the Expo Board about this. And I would like to table this until the commissioners have a chance to discuss this in an executive session.
Just when we, you're waiting on to hear back from us on the lease changes?
I was told there was an open discussion, an open.
I think they submitted a list of things that they were willing to, we haven't yet given them.
Okay.
I, I, my understanding is we are waiting to hear back, because we have not.
That's correct.
Okay.
See, I thought, I thought when we went through, did we, I thought we submitted those.
I don't recall sending anybody from the expo in directly, so.
Maybe we need to do that.
I think we need to get a response.
Yes.
We can handle that. Next week, we'll discuss it and get something happening.
Any further discussion? I have a motion on the floor to table. Do I have a second?
Still confused as to why we wouldn't allow them to do what they're doing, seeing how it's not costing the county anything, and yet, we know, we, we've talked about the lease agreement with the expo, and I'm, I guess, without anything in, in writing, I guess, I don't know what their, what their requests are that we couldn't justify, but if there's a timing issue with this, I, I don't know what difference it's going to make to say, approve this now or put it off for two weeks. I don't know.
So from, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So in my mind, there's a timing issue. If we say go ahead with the grant, and they go ahead, I think we should talk first about what would happen if they can't raise the funds, or the second round, or how much we want to continue to delay, knowing there's another four-H season coming upon us. So to me, the timing is important, because in my mind, the project has extended beyond a reasonable period of time, and I want to make sure that we are not pushing out that time even further by going through a grant cycle that may or may not end up successful.
So I guess my understanding would be if you don't raise the funds, this goes away anyway, correctly, or it would go to round two for you to try to continue to raise funds?
We have to raise funds no matter what, so we either raise a hundred and sixty-two thousand and turn it into seven hundred and something thousand from the state through OKRA, or we just keep raising money until we can get the building finished. This is actually our fast-track way of getting the seven hundred thousand, or whatever it is, I forget, six hundred and something thousand dollars. This would be our fast.
The six hundred and fifty.
If we don't go through with the grant and we have to put it off, yes, I mean, raising six hundred and something thousand dollars organically is tough. That's why we went this avenue. We may not get it, but we might, and if we do, we go into construction in November.
Right.
Or February, I can't remember.
So there's not a timeline after that, but if, award announcements take place in August, and then you have contracts to go through, so that'll take a, a few months, but I would say that you could start this construction. We have bidding, federal bidding to follow. The earliest would be December. January twenty twenty-six will be probably the realistic timeline to, through March of twenty twenty-six, the start of finishing that interior. It is, again, only the interior, and so it is a smaller project, so that timeline is just a guesstimate, so it'll hold me to it. It could maybe speed up as long as we can follow that thirty-day bid timeline and release the funds, but realistically, I think you're starting the inside of that building a year from now.
There is a very serious timing issue with this entire project. We have a very serious issue with the four-H barns. You're talking about a very extended timeline with this bond or with this grant to get this done, to get the first building, to start raising money, to get four-H barns, for a very long project that our community has been watching for a long time, wondering what the completion is going to look like. And it is, of course, if the only end goal is to finish the expo project in the exact same way it was originally envisioned by the Expo Board, this would be the best route to go. But at this point, I think that the contract terms have not been delivered by the Expo Board, and I think that it is an option for the commissioners to pursue a different route, to re-envision, to think about different options. And I think that the commissioners to sit down and have a conversation about if we still want to pursue the original vision of the expo project, or if we want to take a different route with it. Waiting two weeks to have that conversation to set a direction for a project that's gone on for seven years is a very reasonable wait time, so we can respond to the community with what we're actually thinking about how we're going to move forward with this project, how we're going to deliver four-H barns. These are questions the community's had for a very long time, and to just continue to step forward, step forward, step forward, step forward, without the commissioners coming together and stating a direction, I think is irresponsible to the public.
Bobby had a comment.
I don't have a problem with reviewing leases or doing anything like that. If this doesn't cost the county any money, I know it's going to cost, it, I, I know you have to administer, I, I understand that, I understand that, but let's say you take it a different direction, and the expo goes away, and the county takes that building back, how much money is it going to cost the county to do this? We don't have the money.
But I think it's worth a one-hour conversation.
If I may, finish. Please be mindful, Grant, and I, I absolutely agree with you with your salaries and stuff. Grant money, they raise the grant money. If they don't raise the grant money, they don't apply for the grant. It's not a, let's move forward, but we have to be mindful. Okay, we take that back. Now what? The county does not have the money to finish that building. We have the money to finish these buildings, but just be mindful what's going to happen, and where's that money going to come from? And are we going to take it from a different project that maybe we don't want to do? We have to be mindful.
I think we're all mindful of that, but we can't have a conversation if we don't have an executive session. I think it's.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, the way you're talking is, you're talking that, yes, the, the project has taken seven years. Everybody understands that. It's going to cost money, letting them apply for a grant or work toward that process that minus the work at the auditor's office, which I appreciate the auditor more than she knows, and, because I've seen the work that she has to do and what she and her entire staff go through, and are unappreciated by a lot of people. That, to potentially finish this building versus what it's going to cost the county, is a lot, so.
I appreciate that. What I'm saying is, I think we need to say out loud what we've been afraid to say out loud for a while, which is the project has not met the contract requirements, and I think it's work, I think it's worth an executive session for the commissioners to discuss that and decide how we want to move forward.
I'll just say, I'm going to take my auditor's hat off, and I'm a taxpayer now, and I have to agree with Susan. We've done this for so long. I sat through all those meetings where this wasn't even going to be started until we had the money, and look where we're at. I don't think waiting two weeks is going to hurt. I think that there's too many unanswered questions. I had a lot for you yesterday, and I still think there's a lot of unanswered questions about how we move forward and what we do with these contracts when we start, and who's in charge, and who's going to have the say. You know, I don't think we need that battle, and I think two weeks isn't going to hurt. And that's me as a taxpayer and not as the auditor.
You know, to answer your question on the two weeks, you know, two weeks can definitely happen. My goal was to see, to slate a CDBG slot, to say, yes, we, we can reserve a spot for you to apply for this CDBG grant in round one and round two, so that we could start those fundraising efforts. But if we want to wait two weeks, and I understand the timing of how long it's taken you to get there, I am trying to focus, as I, I said with Debbie, I don't try to look back here. What I'm looking at is we have a goal of a building to finish. We have an extension office that really needs a new location. The community does not have a community center and a banquet hall, and we found a solution. Is it a lot, is it an uphill climb? Yeah, it could be, but we can definitely wait those two weeks. And I think that, you know, if that's what you, you decide as a board that you want to do to wait those two weeks, I, I understand, we're here, and we are just excited too, that we have found the funding. We've received OKRA's approval, saying, yes, if you're, get your income surveyed done, and you meet these requirements, then yes, you are eligible to apply, because I wasn't for sure if this project in the state, as the building sets, if it would be CDBG eligible. And so the good news is, it is, and there is a funding solution to help rectify the situation that's out there. And we will wait if that's what you want to do, and that's what the board determines, or if you decide to, to move forward too, that's really up to the board. I'm here to follow what the county would like to do at this time with this request.
Just to throw my two cents worth, not that it's worth anything, I agree with Debbie's earlier statement that it's, it's gone on long enough and it needs to be completed. I also agree with what Joe said, that is it really going to make a difference if we wait or we don't? Because my thing is, this doesn't cost us anything right now. As long as it doesn't cost us, I don't have a problem going forward with it, because it gets you that one step closer to being done. I also understand what Susan's saying, and as a taxpayer, listening to our constituents, we have to have an end game at some point, and this is where it gets harder for us, is I don't know where that light is at the end of the tunnel at this point. So that, trying to weigh both sides out, I don't have a problem waiting the two weeks if that's what this board so decides and chooses to do. If not, I don't have a problem with you applying for the grant, because to me, it doesn't cost us for you to apply. So all I can say is, at this point, there's a motion on the floor, and I don't have a second. So if I don't have a second, then that motion dies for lack of a second.
I give my two cents too. Am I allowed to give some two cents?
You're standing there.
This, as far as moving forward with the expo, I will say, we just voted new officers. I am now your president of the Henry County Expo Board. Duke Azar, Fregger, in January, secondary at the time. We, we want to push forward hard. I know it has been a long time, but between the Ready Two Point O grant we received, the funds from food and beverage, we had, that is our, that was our largest roadblock, and it's, you know, by all sense, it's gone. We can push so hard at this point and finish it. This is our fastest route. If awarded the money, we can be in construction by December to complete the interior of the building. Because it's an interior project, we don't have to worry too much about weather, whether it's cold outside or snowing or, or whatever, we can push forward. So, you know, we didn't really think this was an option for us. We were really just grabbing at whatever we could. When it came down, heard discussions with OKRA, and OKRA said, yeah, it's, it's an option, we were excited, because that moves our timeline fast. If we want it done fast, this is our best option, is the way I, I can see it right now, unless the county has the funds to complete it, or we find a private investor that's going to complete it. As far as I'm, as the president of the expo, I've been deep, knee-deep, shoulder-deep in this project for nearly two years. This is our fastest route, if we can, if we can get funded. It's going to take an income survey, it's going to take raising funds, but that's the way we see it right now. It is kind of scary to think that if we don't get the grant, and it gets pushed off and pushed off, what does that mean? So that's my two cents, that's where we're at. I'm not, we're not hiding anything, or, or trying to swindle anything, but, you know, like I said, I, I talk about this every day, I think about this every day, I have discussions with people every day. I have discussions with people every day on how to get this finished. And so far, but right now, this is our best route. If we can get funded in the first, first round, second round of 25, we go into construction by December and January of 26.
And just so I can verify, I did provide two pages of funding options to Brianna and also Duke on what are all of our options? What's the fastest way to get this done? What's our likelihood of getting all of the options that I presented? And again, CDBG, again, it was at the bottom of the page, but then quickly rose to the top. Once we met with Adam Michel, the director now of the Indiana Office of Rural Affairs. He's in grants management, he reviewed the project and said, yes, we can make this fit. CDBG, if we can get those income surveys and things done. So I think we were all cheering in December that we had the good news, that, you know, we found this available pot of money. So I'm here to respect your wishes. And again, my focus, as I've shared with Steve, is to really focus on that interior portion and to get that done.
And I want to be.
Well, I do want to, I do want to clarify one thing that Rihanna has said, and I know I'm getting some pushback from. The public a little bit, to clarify, the Ready 2.0 money and the food and beverage money. Was not for the Expo. It was given to the park property for infrastructure for water and sewer. And one is hinged on the other, if one goes away, the other goes away. If the other one goes away, the other one goes away. So they hinge on each other as far as you guys keeping that, or I shouldn't say you guys, but it's to go to the park for infrastructure, which. Is for water and sewer, which will include that building because it's on that property. And that's the goal. But I just wanted to clarify, because everybody keeps thinking it went to the Expo and it did not, it went to the park. And it will probably go through city utilities, I'm guessing at some point for routing and getting it through. But it's to make a loop through that property, including the South 90 over to the original park to make the loop. So I just want to clarify that in public so everybody understands that that's where that money's supposed to go and how it's supposed to be used.
Correct, I want to, I want to say too, I do not doubt anyone's good intentions and I'm not at all upset. I'm, this is not about being upset about how things went in the past. I think we owe it to the community to evaluate if we want this project to go forward with the original vision. And I think that that's a legitimate question that people want to know. Are we going to pursue the original vision? Or do we need to reevaluate as a board of commissioners, a vision that might be more timely and what our options are?
Well, at this point, I have no motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion. That we go ahead with what they're wanting to do, where it's not costing the county anything other than the work that the auditor has to do.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I hate doing this and breaking the protocol, but at this point, I'm going to second that motion. All those in favor of allowing them to apply for this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries two, one. I will advise that I believe Susan is correct that we need to have an executive session. Joel, I would ask that we get that, our responses to those to them as soon as we can. Set that up with you, Brianna, and we need to get this lease ironed out, whatever we're going to do and how we're going to do it. Because I 100% agree with Susan and what Debbie has said, as a taxpayer, this has gone on way too long. And like I said before, I'm not sure where that light at the end of the tunnel is at right now. My own personal thing, looking at this, I want it to be success because right now it's a black eye to the county where it's sitting. But saying that and it being said. I also question the fact that if this was a, such a great project that everyone was behind it. You would have already had the funding in place and people would have given it. That's the thing I wrestle with at this point. That being said, I wish best of luck, Godspeed, and I hope you can raise your funds.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time tonight, Debbie, I appreciate your time too. I've enjoyed working with Henry County and I am focused to do the best job that I can do to secure that 650,000. In every way and the fastest way possible to see that interior completed.
Did you want to set a date and time, or do we need to wait till we get that response sent to them, give them a chance to respond? Or do we want to do it at the same time?
I think probably you can schedule the response.
Okay.
Make sure we're ironed out all on the same page and then.
Was it next Wednesday at 11 or 10? Did I say, did I invite 10 or 11? It was next Wednesday. I, what'd you say? Okay, yeah, that's fine with me. Okay. I need invited to that by the. Okay. Okay. Thursday works for me. Thursday at 9:00 AM or do you want them more back to back? Thursday at 9:00 AM? Or do you want them back, would you guys prefer them to be back to back meetings? So is it going to be noon, Debbie, where the judge is meeting? It's at noon, so. And it's going to be here, the courthouse? Zoom in here. So 11? So 11 o'clock? What about you, Joel?
Again, thank you very much, I appreciate your time, if there's anything I can communicate, I'm a phone call away, I'm an email away. Please feel free to reach out to me, I'll be happy to help and answer any of those questions as I move along. And I'll provide you updates as I, as I progress.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, executive session Thursday at 11:00, Debbie, can you post notice for that? Okay.
And I will get that list to you in the morning. Next on the itinerary, we had a appeal. Request for township assistance action. Joel, how do you think we should handle that one? Because I haven't.
Sure, yeah, we've only had a couple in the last few years. But you have a set hearing on the agenda working days, when you give it to us, so it's roughly two weeks, so. We're already meeting on Thursday. If, if this room's open, that might be a good time to do it before the executive session, if you do it at 10:15 to 10:30. Typically, these don't take very long. Essentially the opportunity for the person to file, be able to come in and tell us why he thinks the township trustee would be correct and trustee to respond to it.
Do you think 30 minutes is sufficient? Okay. And if we, if we do make it at that time, do you do all the coordination or who communicates with this person?
So we agree, we're going to have a set the appeal hearing at 10:30 on the 30th?
By the time we finish all that, we're going to eat pizza or donuts or something.
Joel, do you have anything planned for Thursday? So that doesn't need to be in the motion, does it, Joel? All right. That takes care of everything on our itinerary, do I have anything from the public? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.